Good afternoon. It is August 26th. It is now 5:30 PM. We'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Councilmember Salter.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege to serve the people of Orange. As leaders, grant us wisdom, humility, and unity. Let our decisions reflect justice, compassion, and progress for every constituent and neighborhood. Bless our beautiful city of Orange with peace, prosperity, and purpose. Remind us that with you, all things are possible, and that we are here not to be served, but to serve. Guide our hearts, sharpen our minds, and strengthen our hands for the work ahead. We ask that you cover us all, including our family and friends, with your protection, and guide us in all of our steps. May we do your will today and forever, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, commanded by, invisible with the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Salter. We will now move to item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article 8.1200 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, the first name that I have on my list is Ms. Dina Hughes. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Dina Hughes, Tan Healthcare. My comments were actually for the EDC, so I am going to give you back those three minutes.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Hughes. Next, we have Ms. Candace Bilbo.
Thank y'all so much for listening to me for a few minutes. I am the coordinator for the VFW. We have an event coming up September 27th. This will be our sixth event. We'll have seven. In November, we'll have another event. Our group alone has raised about $6,400, just my vendors participating in this. We donate 50% of our proceeds to the auxiliary. They have donated, they have raised in their food section around $5,000, so that's a pretty good chunk of change, just for six events. This will be our sixth one coming up. And we're gonna be opened up at 10 o'clock from four. Larry Tillery will be there. We will have a bounce house. We have roughly about 65 to 70 vendors right now registered. We have Shaved Ice coming from Port Neches. She's a new vendor. And we will also have food from the auxiliary. All of that, all of those proceeds go to our veterans. If you'd like any information, you can look us up on Facebook. Our event is listed on the page, and we'd love to have all you come and join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bilbo. Okay, next, we have Ms. Betsy Bland.
Okay, hopefully, this is like 30 seconds or less. I'm Betsy Bland, and I'm in favor of the trap neuter and release ordinance being passed in Orange, and to help with the overpopulation of stray animals. And I'd also like for Orange to be a no-kill city, and that's for all the animal lovers here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Kelly Kayes.
Kelly Kayes, 46718 IH10 East Winnie, Texas. I started my journey with you guys about two and a half years ago when we were awarded a Best Friends Grant for $30,000, which we subsequently spent on dogs and cats in your municipal shelter to get them out, to get them spayed, to get them neutered, and rehomed. We did over 350 cats that year. It is now time for another Best Friends Grant application. Since then, you guys have become best friend partners as a municipal entity. If we can show that we are working together and collaborating, you guys have a better chance of getting a grant, and so do I. So you have a new lady helping in the pound, which is great. My grant writer has reached out to your grant writer. She hadn't had a response yet, but if you encourage that grant process, we both have a chance of getting money to help the animals in Orange. So that's the letter of intent that we collaborate. I wanted to appreciate that y'all have made some adjustments in the budget. We still need to deal with all the wild cats in the population, and that's a trap neuter and release ordinance. And you guys have to make the ordinance change so the cats are allowed to go back where they came from. But they will be neutered or spayed, so they won't be littering. So I just encourage you to stop the littering in Orange. By passing the trap neuter and release ordinance, I put another copy there for y'all. That's Beaumont's version. And really, I just wanted to say, let's make some money, and let's keep spaying and neutering. Let's be a no-kill city.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Ms. Tammy Glosson.
My name is Tammy Glosson. I am the owner of the Snowborne Snow Cones. My address is 6928 Highway 87 North. It's within the city of Orange. It's in Little Cypress, actually. While we are best known for snow cones, we also have a variety of specialty coffees and loaded teas. I currently operate two brick-and-mortar locations, one in Raceville and one in the city of Orange, which is open seven days a week. Additionally, I own a mobile trailer used exclusively for events. Since opening in 2018, I've been honored to serve and grow alongside our local community. I'm here to respectfully express my concern regarding the vendor selection process for the upcoming Orange Tober Festival. In the recent conversation with another vendor, it was related that selection was made based on what was considered a good fit for the event, according to Devon with the city of Orange. This raises an important question. How does another vendor, one that did not open their business until August 11th of '25, and was not approved by the Health Department until August the 6th, and has had no prior event experience qualifies as a better fit over longstanding licensed taxpaying local businesses with proven track records and years of community involvement? On October 14th, Mayor Larry Spears said, "We want businesses to thrive in Orange, and we want new opportunities to take a chance in our little town. It's up to us." I fully support those visions, but it's concerning when local businesses are passed over in favor of vendors from outside the city of Orange and even beyond Orange County, especially when we have qualified capable businesses already operating here. Sorry. Things bring us to a broader issue. If the city does not actively support and prioritize the businesses already invested in this community, what message does that send to other considering businesses bringing their businesses here? What happens to the commitment to shop local and keep tax dollars circulating within our own economy? It's reasonable to expect transparency and fairness in the selection process, especially when it involves decisions that directly affect local businesses, owners, who contribute to the city's tax base and economics. As taxpayer and stakeholders in the community, we deserve answers and accountability. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have David Bailey. Okay, next, we have Ms. Jenny Stark. Okay, and next, we have Mr. James Ross.
My name is James Ross, a proud resident, lifelong resident here in Orange, Texas. I've come to the council today, as I did before. This is in regards to the Navy Park, the lack of restroom facilities there. We gotta do something. We have to. I mean, I know we've spent money on getting the park, and I appreciate everything that the city has done. I mean, we, everybody is enjoying the park. But when you go out there with kids, and I have multiple grandchildren, multiple kids as well, but when you go out there with your kids, and if I go out there with five or six of them, and one has to use the restroom, I have to round everybody up and load them back up in the car to take them home to use the restroom. I mean, you know, it's a big enough park, and I think that it definitely qualifies for restroom facilities. So I like you guys' consideration on making that happen. I know we've talked about this before. I've came here and spoke to you guys about it before. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be a nuisance or anything like that, but that is very, that is needed. Y'all know that I have the, I'm president of Fruit City is back. We do the annual Easter egg hunt here every year. And we have to come in, and once we get you guys permission, and y'all blessed and to be out there, then we have to come back in and ask for porta potties. You know, something for the patrons in the park to be able to use the facilities there. If not, they'd have to leave out, like many of us have to do. We'd have to leave out the park. Again, I appreciate the work that's been done in the park. It's a very, I love the upgrades. It's nice, and it's something that everybody could be proud of. People coming in from out of town and everything is enjoying that park. And we're trying to bring a positive narrative to it. You know, I understand that it's been negative for many years, but we got some people that's standing up, and we wanna, we wanna continue on bringing positivity to it, but we need just a little bit more help. So let's get some restrooms out there as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all the names that we have on our list. Is there anyone else who would like to address city council at this time? Please come forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Seth Hancock. Address 510 Camelia, Orange, Texas. I'm gonna speak on the same topic she spoke on. Event-wise, it's hard for me to speak about these events in Orange without getting emotional. I've been doing Orange October since it started, since I got my stuff legalized and did what I had to do. I helped build that event right along with the next side of event holders. So when y'all made y'all decisions to swipe the originals and add all the new people, y'all, not only did y'all take us off the event, we gotta try to find funds for October. Third, fourth, and fifth, we make enough money to carry us for a month or two without doing anything extra. So when y'all finally hit us back on my, actually on my birthday, August 18th, said we was denied. It's too late to run the bone and put an application for their event, because their event is closed. It's too late to go to Woodville. It's too late to go to Newton. It's too late to go to Jasper. Everybody's closed. So I don't know how y'all went about picking this, but it's a lot going on with events. It's more than just signing up, getting the, it's a lot to pull off October, Orange October. I done did it every year, y'all done it. It's a lot to pull that event off. A lot of new people not gonna be able to pull that event off. I'm all for giving somebody a shot, but maybe y'all should've went about it differently. Let's add one this year, or let's put them on the waiting list in case I can't make it, or Mr. Forrest can't make it, or Ice Cream Shack can't make it, or Pink Lady can't make it, or Snowborne can't make it. Do it that way. But when y'all wipe all us out at one time, we all clustered right now in a group, because we gotta try to find funds to make it, that third, fourth, and fifth. We don't have the event that we can get in for the third, fourth, and fifth. Y'all don't think about those decisions when y'all making them decisions. I'm not a millionaire. We live event to event. I live Jasper, made it back to Orange at 5 o'clock, and I made it 5:30 just to speak on the same thing she spoke on. So when y'all make those decisions, y'all gotta keep, I hear y'all say, "Small business, small town." We want small businesses to thrive. Only way to thrive is to keep us alive. When y'all kicked us out the event, when I say kick, denied, y'all cut the lifeline for October. So October money carries us November and December. Yes, I'm like James. I got beaucoup kids. There was eight kids Christmas y'all wiped away. So I have to struggle to find events now to cover that. So it ain't, I get emotional, because I, wings are mean everything to me. But it ain't just that. Man, it's a lot of people travel to Orange October to get them booty fries, to get them wings and fries. Like, I think I done my part over the three years, four years, helping that event thrive. And I think I expressed that year in July, that they was getting ready to make certain changes, and certain changes wasn't gonna sit well with all those vendors. And I mean, if it take us coming and sitting here and being a part of y'all meetings when y'all selecting, that's cool. We got opinions that we think y'all might wanna hear. With all due respect, that's my turn.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else?
Hey, my name's Chuck Neely. I live in Warburg, 3306 Warburg. I'm gonna talk about the same thing. And my only concern is, at this point, is how that decision was made to exclude the ones that had been there. And second, you said today that there wouldn't be no answers today, you know, that would go back to committees. I've sent emails and left voicemails and not got a response from the office down there about this. So I'd just like to know how the decision was made, and a response to my emails and phone calls, as well as all the other food trucks there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, we will close citizen comments. And after now that we've closed citizen comments, I will, once again, for those who are not used to come into meetings, please know that during the citizen comments, we are not allowed to respond, so that is no form of disrespect to any of you. We must follow Texas legislature rules, and we will get with you following this. So please know that we care. Thank you for your comments. Thank you to all of you that got up and said what you said, but please know that we're not not commenting out of disrespect, which is not allowed to. Okay? We will now move on to city announcements, city staff announcements, and city events.
I won't go early this time. I usually wait till the end, but since we have such a nice crowd, Thursday, this Thursday August the 28th, from 11:00 AM till noon, City Hall will be closed for staff. So closed from 11:00 to 12:00.
Okay.
We'll post it now.
All right. Anything else? Staff events? We're good?
That's it.
It's okay, I have one. So I have one that I needed to jump in there and throw in there, but we actually have a special visitor here. I believe Ms. Aubrey Woods has come to visit us, and ladies and gentlemen, I would like to present to you Ms. Orange County. Ms. Woods, come on down. Come on down.
So real quick, Ms., I was contacted, and they were like, "We would love for you to recognize her. It is an honor to recognize you." And I'm gonna read just a few things on why this is a special moment. So Ms. Aubrey Woods is 16 years old. She's representing us. For those who may not know, she goes to school here locally. But one of the most interesting facts that I love is, she has written a book. And the name of that book is?
There's Nothing Wrong With You.
And the reason why is, so many little young girls are looked down upon or talked bad about for the way they look, or whatever they may weigh, and she has written a book to address that, so that all young ladies know that they are loved and that they're special. And so not only are you Ms. Orange County, but you're also doing your best to inspire. And so on behalf of the Orange City Council and the citizens of Orange, we want to congratulate you, and thank you for coming and visiting us tonight. Yes. Round of applause, please.
Thank you.
Okay, in the middle, I'm seeing her. Oh, yeah. We know half this picture's not gonna be that good.
Thank you.
Of where you're describing to compete, right? So you wanna tell them?
Hi, I'm Aubrey Kaye, and so I compete in pageants globally all around, and I'm also prepared to compete in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, for the title of Miss Louisiana High School America, in hopes of competing and representing at the Miss High School America Pageant next summer in Little Rock. And also, if you know any little girls in your family who would love to start competing in pageants, I could not recommend more. They have helped me with so much things, other than just my appearance and knowing how to make myself look approachable and things, but they have helped with confidence. The Miss Orange County Pageant is something I hold near and dear to my heart, and it will be held next year, April 4th, 2026, at the Julie Rogers. So I recommend that you sign your little girls up.
All right, thank you. Okay, and I like that, get that orange dress on too, keeping it real. I like that. Okay, we have a proclamation. This is a very special proclamation for a man that has done so much to help us keep our local history. So proclamation from the office of the Mayor of the City of Orange. Whereas Dr. Howard C. Williams dedicated his life to preserving and celebrating the history of Orange and Orange County, and through his vision and leadership was instrumental in establishing the Heritage House Museum of Orange County, which continues to serve as a place of education, preservation, and pride for the citizens of Orange. And whereas the author of Gateway to Texas, The History of Orange and Orange County, and Pitchering Orange, along with numerous historical articles in La Sabina's, Dr. Williams provided invaluable contributions to our collective knowledge and appreciation of Orange County's heritage, and ensured that the story of Orange would be documented for future generations. And whereas Dr. Williams served his country honorably as a World War II veteran, practiced medicine as a compassionate and dedicated physician for more than 60 years, and enriched the lives of many through his passions as a balloonist, photographer, historian, and loving husband and father. And whereas throughout his lifetime, Dr. Williams was recognized with numerous honors, including being named Historian of the Year for Orange County, Chairman of the Orange County Historical Commission, and Citizen of the Year by the Greater Orange Chamber of Commerce. And whereas the city of Orange wishes to honor and celebrate the remarkable legacy of Dr. Howard C. Williams on the occasion of his 100th birthday, now therefore, I, Larry Spears Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 7th, 2025, as Dr. Howard C. Williams Day in the city of Orange, Texas, and encourage all citizens to join together in celebrating his memory, his many contributions to our community, and his lasting impact on our history. Congratulations. Somebody, somebody. Oh, the group, okay.
I think we might call the council in the photo if we could.
We'll all the council in the photo.
I don't think we can see all of them.
One, two, three. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I'm waiting for you. Mom's waiting, I'm ready.
June, June, June.
I'm just trying to say thank y'all, and I wanted to remind people, on September 7th, at the Heritage House, we're gonna have a reception and an exhibit. My dad would've turned 100 years old on September the 9th, and, what is so special about today? This was my mom and dad's, would've been their 75th anniversary. I had my little sister, who turned 65 today, on the same day. So this has just been a very special day, and I do thank y'all.
Thank you.
June, one of the cooking station.
Yeah. She says she ain't cooking, boss. Okay, next, we have item seven, a presentation. Presentation by Representatives of the Beaumont Housing Authority regarding the Orange Housing Authority.
My name is Allison Langdon, and I'm the CEO with the Beaumont Housing Authority. And I just wanted to come here tonight to kind of tell you what's going on, and why Beaumont's at Orange right now. I wanted to provide progress update. For those of you who aren't familiar, the Orange Housing Authority's been undergoing some issues and problems for several years now. We will approach my head and my, one of the board members, Mary Lou Kinkamal, about us coming in here and helping to get the agency back on the right track. And so we started that process on July 7th, and I wanted to kind of give you an idea of what challenges the Housing Authority is facing, and what we're doing to address it. For those of you who aren't familiar with BHA, we have an experienced team of 66 employees that manage over 1,200 units and nearly 2,000 such note vouchers. I have my board chairman here, Kennedy Andrews, and my vice chair, Paul Hoster, here in support, as well as I have several staff members throughout the room. After years of mismanagement, the Orange Housing Authority Board entered into a management agreement, authorizing BHA to take over our operations in the city, or the agency. And just to give you an idea of what we've done so far, upon takeover, we found significant issues with the conditions of the units. If you're not familiar with Orange Housing Authority's inventory, you should've gotten a binder. There is actually a page, the last page behind the properties tab, gives a list of the Housing Authority portfolio. And we found significant issues with the conditions of these units. On day one, our maintenance team went out and completed a 100% inspection of the units, and they, since we took over, have completed 117 work orders on our first three weeks. And that includes repair of 33 HVAC systems that were in our portfolio. So they had tenants that were living in units for months with no AC. Our maintenance team was able to repair all of them in one day. So that kind of gives you an idea of the condition and the things that we can bring to the table. If you're not familiar with James O. Roberts, that is a property that's on Burton Avenue. That property has been covered by blue top on the roofs for over a year. We've gotten the roofs repaired at that property. We've also brought in contractors to make files and safety repairs, to provide pest control and term out treatment, and to maintain the lungs. So hopefully, you'll start to see more curb appeal at those properties. We are also setting expectations for tenants. For too long, these units have been neglected, and there weren't expectations set as far as how you treat the unit, pay your rent, treat your neighbors with respect. So we're setting standards there. Our units are gonna be inspected on a monthly basis by our management team, and we will be aggressive about issuing lease violations to ensure that the property is treated with We are also bringing in members. We have a social service team that works with over 80 social and supportive service partners in the region, to provide job training, employment, youth services, elderly and disabled services. We are wanting to bring that team over here to try to help the tenants that are here. Finance, the agency has hundreds of thousands of dollars in unpaid invoices, and there is evidence that funds have been misappropriated or possibly stolen. The board has not received proper financials in two years. So BHA has entered into an agreement with the National Recognized Accounting Fund, BDO, which is our accountant in Beaumont, to serve as the fee accountant for the agency, and they've been tasked with not only getting the financials in order, but also setting up a system of internal controls so this doesn't happen again. One of the things that we did when we arrived at the agency is we vacated all of the positions and scaled back from 19 to 11 positions, and employees were required to reapply for their jobs, and also undergo drug screening and a background check. So we wanted to make sure that whoever we kept are people that have been investigated, not investigated, but researched and looked into to make into to make sure that they were proper employees for the agency. We've also to expedite services, the agency has piggybacked off of BHA contracts for services such as lawn care, electrical services, and plumbing services, to get those people in quickly. And we do need the city's support. We are getting some traction, but your partnership is vital to our success. We need help with the public safety aspect. If we can get more patrols through those properties, if we can get help with issuing and enforcing trespass warnings whenever we, you know, have people that shouldn't be on the property out there, and just increase safety patrols. We are also wanting to start applying for grants, so we may need some city's support on grant applications. And if we reach a point where we do major capital repairs, we might need help with fast-tracking permitted inspections, those type of things. So that's kind of a quick summary of what's going on. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions from council?
July seventh.
Okay, any more questions from council? Okay, so first let me start with, thank you, Ms. Alter, for bringing this to the agenda to be placed on the, bringing this item to be placed on the agenda. One of the things that I have always wanted to do here is make sure we have transparency. So thank you for bringing them. I know when we had conversations the other day, very disappointed and upset with what I have heard about that agency, because even though we do not directly control it, we are still responsible in some little bit ways. There's reports I have to sign off on. I want to thank Ms. Klinkhammer for your due diligence. I know that you've been dealing with this for quite a while, and it's very admirable of you that, when you're the lone voice that is trying to fight things that we are hearing, and this is, for those who have listened in and paid attention, she did not give you everything. It's not good at all. It's very, very bad. But you stood up to them, and the place has been cleaned up, and we are now on the up and up. Families were saved from being homeless because of your actions. And so thank you for all that you have done. Yes, please, yeah. It's kind of like that movie, wasn't it, where the lady was fighting against the water, and they thought she was crazy, what was that, with Julia Roberts? So she's, yeah, Erin Brockovich, she's done that. So thank you. Thank you to Beaumont Housing Authority. I'm a little bit disappointed that we have had to lean on you like we have, but we do appreciate your support, and so we can get that back where it needs to be. I will not go too deep into all the other things that we talked about. However, I will say, certain things need to be dealt with, and if it means that people need to be held accountable for their theft and things of that nature, you did that to yourself, we didn't do that to you. So, but on the other end, thank you, thank you, thank you. I will be meeting with you all very soon, and I just really appreciate, because I can't imagine what it would have been if we'd have families out on the street not being aware of just how much the corruption was. So thank you all again. Appreciate it. Thank you. Need to give her a whole extra bonus. Okay, we will move on to now item eight, Consent Agenda, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes, and August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion? Can we have a motion and a second, Ms. Alter, Ms. McKenna, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Mr. Birch, Mr. Mortimer? Okay, motion passes. Item nine A, Ordinances, Final Reading, Consider An Ordinance Amending Section ten point two one zero four, Speed Limits on Certain Highways of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, to Regulate the Speed on State-Maintained Highway sixty-two in the city of Orange, Orange County, Texas, Providing a Penalty and Repealing All Other Ordinances in Conflict Therewith. First reading was August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Adam Jack.
Yes, Mayor, Council, good evening. This first speed reduction, there are three of them. There are two speed reduction areas and one school zone area for ordinance to bring into consideration. The first one is speed reduction on State Highway sixty-two. The northern section is from the city limits to the vicinity of Eight Gate Road, just north of Araby Road, reducing from seventy-five miles an hour to sixty-five miles an hour. The southern section picking up at that location to a location just north of ten seventy-eight, reduced from seventy-five miles an hour to seventy miles an hour. Staff recommends approval for purposes of safety, health, and the well-being of the traveling public.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Jack? Okay, if not, do I have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Alter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch? Okay, motion passes. Item nine B, Final Reading, Consider An Ordinance Amending Section ten point two one zero four, Speed Limits on Certain Highways of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, to Regulate the Speed on State-Maintained FM thirty-two forty-seven in the city of Orange, Orange County, Texas, Providing a Penalty and Repealing All Other Ordinances in Conflict Therewith. The first reading was August twelfth of twenty twenty-five. Mr. Jack.
Yes, this is on Martin Luther Kane Drive. The northern section is just west of Little Cypress Grove subdivision, to a point just south of Adams Bayou Bridge, reducing the speed limit from sixty-five to sixty miles an hour. And then the southern section from the Adams Bayou Bridge to just south of the Interstate ten, Frontage Road, from fifty-five miles to fifty miles an hour. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Alter? Okay, motion passes. On to item nine C, Consider An Ordinance Amending Section ten point two two zero one, School Zones Designated of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, to Regulate the Designation of School Zones on State-Maintained Highway FM thirty-two forty-seven in the city of Orange, Orange County, Texas, Providing a Penalty and Repealing All Other Ordinances in Conflict Therewith. The first reading was on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Jack.
Yes, this ordinance codifies the school zone that is already in place, from just north of Hillbrook Drive to just north of the Frontage Road, a speed limit of thirty-five during school hours. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments? Okay, if not, do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Alter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Jack. Item ten A, Final Reading, Consider a Resolution Approving an EDC Infrastructure Grant Agreement with Todd Stark and Bayou Cafe, located at twenty-two-ten Highway sixty-two South, Orange, Texas, seven-seven-six-three-zero, in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand. The first reading was August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Gravitt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this will be the last step in the process for approvals with Bayou Cafe. Mr. Todd Stark will be repurposing what was a former Sonic located on Highway sixty-two. So we're excited to see this facility being repurposed into something new. Mr. Stark has added on, there's a lot of progress going on, progress going on at the site. Mr. Stark has added on a dining room, and we are hoping for a late summer opening, is what we have been told. So we are excited to see the progress going on there. And the next step in the process is we will get signature on the agreement, and then we're home free.
Okay. I hope that, if you haven't had a chance to ride down that section of sixty-two, you can't tell that it used to be a Sonic unless you look over and see the torn-down pieces of equipment. But he's done an amazing job, and like we said earlier, we look forward to local entrepreneurs bringing new business to the city. So, any have any questions for Ms. Gravitt? Okay, if not, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Birch, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Ms. Alter, Ms. McKenna? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gravitt. Item ten B, all right. Thank you, we need, we need a hand clap tonight. Consider a Resolution Approving an EDC Infrastructure Grant Agreement with BCS Orange, seven B LCC, Seven Brew, thirty-one thirty-one North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas, seven-seven-six-three-zero, in an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand. Ms. Gravitt.
So this project was also recently brought to the EDC and council, so we're into, we have, then it completed the sixty-day waiting periods. We are entering the next step in the process. For those that may be unfamiliar where this is located, it's at thirty-one thirty-one North Sixteenth Street. So there was a former Allstate building that was there. It has recently been torn down. If you've driven down Sixteenth Street, you'll notice that progress. So we're excited to see some progress going on. Seven Brew is a drive-through coffee shop. They do not only serve coffee, they have coffee, energy drinks, milkshakes, things like that. So we're excited to see the progress going on on Sixteenth Street. And like I said, this is the next step in the process, and then we'll have the final reading at our next meeting. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Gravitt? I know we've covered this several times. Okay, any comments? Okay, all right, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Alter? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gravitt. Item ten C, Consider a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the First One-Year Extension of Agreement for Disaster Recovery Monitoring Services with Tetra Tech Incorporated. Mr. Peyton Smith.
Mayor, Council, this item is for a one-year extension with our debris monitoring contract with Tetra Tech. The contract was secured through a joint RFP process with Orange County and ensures we have a vendor in place to monitor debris removal activities if a disaster occurs. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, thank you for doing this, making sure we're prepared for any inclement situation. If not, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Alter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Item eleven A, Consider a Motion Approving Action Taken by the Orange EDC Concerning the Withdrawal of a One Hundred Thousand EDC Incentive from Ace Business Park LLC, forty-two-hundred Highway one oh five, Orange, Texas, seven-seven-six-three-zero, due to a request from project owner, Mr. James Royce Abrigo. Mr. Trey Hand.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, after several meetings and conversations with the project owner, he's made a decision not to move forward with the project at this time. So we received the letter of withdrawal from funds, and subject to your approval, we'll just move those back in the available funds for future projects. So I'll be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay, any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion? Okay, motion in a second, Mr. Birch, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Ms. Alter, Ms. McKenna? Okay, motion passes. On to item eleven B, Consider a Motion Approving Action Taken by the Orange EDC in the Form of a Motion of Intent Approving an EDC Incentive for the Proposed HEB Project to be Located at IH Ten West at North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas, seven-seven-six-three-two, for Eligible Infrastructure Improvements in an Amount Not to Exceed One Point Five Million for the Purpose of Economic Development. Mr. Trey Hand.
Yeah, so HEB at this point in time is very early in the process in terms of working action items that basically will build the financial portfolio to determine whether or not they will move forward at a certain period in time. So at this point, what we are considering from an EDC standpoint that goes to you as a council, is a one-point-five-million-dollar reimbursement grant that would be targeted for eligible infrastructure items at that point in time. Now, please consider that in the event that the project doesn't move forward for whatever reason, or it's not completed, then basically we're protected as a city. But this is just part of the economic development process to consider what incentives may be available for HEB to consider. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trey Hand. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Trey Hand? If not, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Alter? Okay, motion passes. Item eleven B, Consider a Motion Approving Action Taken by the Orange EDC in the Form of a Motion of Intent Approving an EDC Incentive for the Proposed HEB Project to be Located at IH Ten West at North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas, seven-seven-six-three-two, for Eligible Infrastructure Improvements in an Amount Not to Exceed One Point Five Million for the Purpose of Economic Development. Mr. Trey Hand.
So in terms of additional incentives, one, one thing that can be considered is how can the EDC move forward with not only eligible infrastructure, but also we can consider basically what the eight-point-two-five percent sales tax rate is, and of that, a half percent goes toward the restricted tax. So it's a combination in terms of the one-point-five-million toward eligible infrastructure, and then a thirty-three percent rebate or a half percent sales tax rebate, subject to project completion. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Trey Hand, for trying to save my behind, but I'm sorry, y'all, I read that wrong, but thank you.
That's okay.
Sometimes you start scrolling and you get lost. So let me go back to the part, let me repeat.
Sure.
So West and North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas, seven-seven-six-three-two, for a sales tax rebate equal to thirty-three percent of sales tax generated at the site over a ten-year period for the purpose of economic development. Thank you, Mr. Trey Hand. Any questions? All right, do we have a motion? Okay, may I have a motion in a second, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Alter? Motion passes. That was the smoothest save ever. Thank you. I mean, he did it. He did good. I couldn't win. All right, item eleven D, Consider a Motion Acknowledging the Annual Review and Adoption of the Investment Policy for the City of Orange. Ms. Zito.
Yes, good afternoon. So this is our investment policy. We annually, the council needs to just review and approve it. We've had no changes. The policy is what guides our cash, handling our cash investments, and, but we've had no changes for this year. We just need to approve it, please.
All right, any questions or comments? Okay, if not, do we have a motion? Okay, I have a motion and a second, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Alter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch? Okay, motion passes. On to item eleven E, Consider a Motion Authorizing Payment in the Amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars to the Texas Municipal League for Property and Liability Insurance for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six. Ms. Zito.
Yeah, so we buy insurance through TML, Texas Municipal League, and this is for our property and liability policies. Overall, it's about a six-point-six-one increase. Renewals are usually based on the TML's overall rates for all the cities that they cover in Texas, our experience modifier, which is how many accidents have we had, how many claims have we had, and such, and of course, our property values and the levels of insurance that we need. So just the more notable increases are auto liability for the pool, all cities, went up by seventeen percent. Auto physical damage, the rates went up by ten percent. And real and personal property rates in general for the whole pool went up by four-point-seven. So our increase of six-point-six-one is modest compared to other cities across Texas, but we do need to approve this annual payment, because we pay annually to save two percent. We save where we can.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Ms. Zito, for that explanation. Do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Ms. Alter, Ms. McKenna, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Mr. Birch, Mr. Mortimer? Okay, motion passes. Item eleven F, Consider a Motion Authorizing Payment in the Amount of sixty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-one to the Texas Municipal League for Workers' Compensation Insurance for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six. Claims and Administration Fees are also approved for payment to the Texas Municipal League as follows. The claims, claims payment fee, claims before ten oh one oh one, two percent of claim, per occurrence administration fee, two thousand for indemnity claims, per occurrence administration fee, two hundred for medical-only claims. Ms. Zito.
So this is for our workers' comp policy to cover all of our employees. We go through TML. We're partially self-insured, so up to a hundred thousand per claim. The city's gonna pay. After that, then TML will pay. And we have three hundred aggregate, so all the claims together for the year. But we maintain a separate fund for our workers' comp. It has a reserve of a little over a million. We're, we got plenty of reserves to cover high-dollar claims, is what we call them, so that we're covered. And, let's see, so our annual premium for that is, that's the, for their fees to, for them to administer our workers' comp is sixty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-fifty-one dollars.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments? Okay, if not, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Birch, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Ms. Alter, Ms. McKenna? Okay, motion passes. Item eleven G, Consider a Motion to Renew the Employee Assistance Program Services with Deer Oaks EAP Services LLC, Doing Business as All-One Health, add a two percent increase in rates for a one-year term with an automatic additional one-year extension after the initial term. Ms. Zito.
Yeah, so the EAP is a benefit we provide our employees. This is at no cost of our employees. We offer them, this, this company offers services such as counseling, whether it's mental health counseling, they offer financial and legal counseling or assistance. They have work-life resources such as helping you find daycare, or a pet center, whatever they need. So it's just one of our benefits. It's at a, it's a very low cost. It's like a couple dollars per employee per month. It's not a very great cost, but it is a great benefit to our employees. So we'd like to renew it at a two percent increase for one year.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments? Okay, if not, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Birch, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Ms. Alter, Ms. McKenna? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. The EAP program is very helpful to our fellow team members, and I'm thankful that we got that started and that we're able to keep it going. Okay, on to item H. Mr. Mortimer.
Pass those down. Thank you. I'll make this short, though, Mayor, if I can. Back in June or June the tenth.
If you would read, did you read the agenda?
Oh, okay, I thought whenever it's theirs that they read it. He can read it. Yeah, he can read it.
Discussion on Ordinance Amending the City of Orange Code of Ordinances, Chapter Four, Business and Commerce, Article four point seven zero zero, game rooms in the entirety by prohibiting redemption machines and game rooms within the city of Orange. Thank you. Mr. Knopf, you have any questions? My presentation, I just wanted to make sure, guys, that we had a meeting on June the tenth. It was a joint special call meeting with P and Z. They brought to us two ordinances and, and first one, we just discussed here. P and Z had recommended both of them to us. We had a, a night that we did not make any decisions at that particular night, just due to the fact that council needed to have more time to take a look at it. Many of us have taken a look at it. It was supposed to be brought up a couple of weeks after, or a couple, couple of weeks or so after that, that timeframe. With a lot of things going on, it did not happen. So I wanted to see if we had the interest to bring these back up again, because I think it's very important that we take a look at these game rooms. In fact, just from information, I know, I think we had a couple of robberies recently, one as we reported, one allegedly, in game rooms. There's a lot of issues that we have. I wanted to make sure that there was some interest. If so, we will have to start this process from the beginning once again, go back through all these processes, and I would like to challenge staff to take care of this for us so we can move forward with it if this council wishes to do so.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Knopf, do you have anything you want to say?
I do have a presentation, if you would like to hear it, or if not, that's okay too.
No, I mean, no, I mean, I think it would be good to hear it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just to kind of recap where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Mortimer.
The current city ordinance was adopted on second meeting on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and it provides for a thousand dollar application fee and an application form to apply for a game room permit. It prohibits game rooms within three hundred feet of a church, school, or hospital. It requires certain building features such as a game room sign, transparent and uncovered windows, readily accessible access to the game room area, and some other requirements. It requires an annual thousand dollar fee per machine, per year. It requires each machine to have an annual sticker. It restricts hours to between eight o'clock AM and ten o'clock PM. It requires employees to wear name badges. So since that ordinance was passed, Fort Worth, the city of Fort Worth, filed suit, which ultimately went to the Texas Supreme Court. And so the city of Orange put everything on hold once it went to the Texas Supreme Court, because we didn't know how the Supreme Court was going to rule. And then they bounced back from the Texas Supreme Court back to the Court of Appeals, and then the Second Court of Appeals in Fort Worth ruled that gaming machines are unconstitutional under the Texas Constitution. And then that decision was appealed back to the Texas Supreme Court, which rejected the appeal. They just decided not to hear the appeal. And then after that, the city of Fort Worth, the city council adopted a couple of ordinances banning game rooms and amusement redemption machines from the city of Fort Worth. Then the Orange City Council passed ordinances, first reading. One is to amend Chapter Four of the Code of Ordinances. The other one was to amend Chapter Twelve of the Code of Ordinances. And then, as, as Councilmember Mortimer said, there were sort of things that happened, and it came up for second meeting, had gotten a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then there was no motion or second to adopt the ordinances on second meeting. And now, recently, the city of Vitor has adopted an ordinance banning game rooms and amusement redemption machines, and their ordinance becomes effective immediately after adoption. They did not give a ninety-day requirement. You know, the ninety days is what Fort Worth did, but there is no requirement. Did any city give a certain amount of days to come into compliance? And then recently, the city of Beaumont adopted an ordinance banning game rooms and amusement redemption machines, and they did give owners ninety days to come into compliance. So if you want to ban game rooms, then what you would need to do is, like Councilmember Mortimer said, is start the process all over again, adopting ordinance, repealing Article four point one seven, game rooms of the Code of Ordinances, and that requires two readings, does not require a public hearing. And then you'd also need to pass an ordinance amending Chapter Twelve, Planning and Zoning, and then that requires a public hearing. And so that would require publishing the public hearing at least fifteen days before the date of the public hearing, and then conducting the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission would vote on a recommendation to the city council, and then the city council would receive that recommendation and vote whether or not to adopt the ordinance, banning game rooms from the city of Orange. And then if the ordinance passes on first reading, if, if both ordinances pass on first reading, then there's a second meeting required also before they become effective. So the ordinance, the ordinances may provide the amusement redemption machines and game rooms bans or effective immediately, or they can be at some point in the future. You know, it doesn't have to be ninety days. It could be a shorter amount of time or longer amount of time. So if the council wants the staff to prepare ordinances banning game rooms and amusement redemption machines, then the soonest we could do it would be to submit a notice of a joint public hearing to the newspaper no later than September sixteenth of twenty-twenty-five, and then conduct the joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council on October seventh, and then right after that public hearing, ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to vote on a recommendation to the city council. And then the city council would receive that P and Z recommendation on October fourteenth, and then vote on both ordinances. And then if one or both ordinances pass on October fourteenth, then the second meeting of the ordinances would be on October twenty-eighth.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that presentation. Okay, so now that it was put on the agenda item as a discussion on an ordinance, do we need to move forward with?
Well, Mr. Little Housekeeper, could you read the agenda item for a kind of a word?
Uh, Ms. Salter has a question.
Thank you. One of my questions is, because I know it's saying about gaming rooms itself, but I've seen, I've been to a gas station on Sixth Inch Street and one on sixty-two where they have those games, but they're just like, if you go into a gas, go into the store, they're right there. So does that still apply?
Yeah.
Because it's not a game room. They're not going.
When we, when we first passed the ordinance here in the city of Orange, the ordinance we passed was that they weren't in a back room, but that they were put in the front. So that's why you see them like that. That was the first thing that we did a while back.
And in that area, still, in the ordinance referred to as a game room, it's an area where there are machines of chance.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Kate, will you read, uh, please?
I'd be glad to. Discussion on Ordinance Amending the City of Orange Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twelve, Planning and Zoning, Section twelve point five zero two, definitions by adding a definition of an amusement redemption machines and game room, and Section twelve point six zero eight, land use matrix by prohibiting amusement redemption machines and, and/or game rooms in any district in the city of Orange.
Okay.
Same, what he just said.
So, so again, if we want to talk about it collectively, now we can.
Okay, so collectively, do you have any comments from the council?
Well, Mr. Knopf pointed out to us yesterday, these are games of chance. It's not like we're Chuck E. Cheese going to come in. That's a game of skill. So we're not banning that. We're only banning games of chance. And there's no way somebody comes, spent thousands of dollars for a fuzzy animal that we know is being turned in somewhere else. So I mean, I'm glad Councilmember Mortimer brought this back up again for us to revisit.
All right, anything, Ms. McKenna? I'm gonna just go down the line.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right, we know you will like it.
It's definitely needed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm full support.
Okay, all right, it's like we have. We're not voting, but we're just letting you know that we are moving forward. Yeah, okay. It's just a chance for us to make comments. So thank you, Mr. Knopf.
In the ordinance that we're bringing to you, do you want a ninety-day period effective date, or do you want to make it effective immediately like Vitor did?
Why give them ninety days to continue the, I mean, I think we should do it immediately if we're gonna do it.
Okay, any, I know we're not voting, but anyone in support of that? Immediate or ninety?
I don't want ninety. I don't think we need to do that. We've given this, we've given them another hundred and twenty-plus days because of it.
Yep.
Okay, so it sounds like it's gonna be immediate. Looks like effective immediately.
Effective immediately upon second meeting and publication.
Yes, sir, that's what it sounds like. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Okay, so there is no vote to be taken because it's just a discussion. And thank you, Mr. Mortimer, for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Knopf, and to staff. Okay, so we will re, item twelve says it's to recess the meeting of Orange City Council. You do not have to leave. This is just how we move into a different part of working on insurance and things for fellow team members here in the city. We will recess regular meeting of the city of Orange City Council to convene a meeting of the city of Orange Employee Benefits Trust to approve selection, selection for medical insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance. Okay, I guess y'all do want to leave. And life insurance for city employees. Y'all didn't have to leave. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can. You can go ahead and start, I mean.
I think you have to read the, um, B.
Go to the next one?
I have to convene.
Oh, so I'm recessed it, I'm sorry.
We recessed it, but now we gotta convene the trust.
Okay, so here we go. So we will now call this meeting to order. Consider a motion acknowledging receipt of, I'm sorry, receipt of and authorizing trustee Spears to sign the city of Orange Employee Benefit Perspective Premium Projection Renewal and the Benefit Program Application from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for the period of October first, twenty-twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Ms. Zito.
So this motion is just to allow the mayor to sign our application to renew our, our insurance, our medical insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield. The next motion, I will tell you how much the increase is.
Okay, so do we have a motion to acknowledge that receipt? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch. Okay, thirteen B, consider a motion approving employee medical insurance renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas at an estimated four million, eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven, seventy, seventy-five dollar annual premium for a period of one year. The renewal rate is at a sixteen point seven percent increase. However, it is offset with credits to result in effective fourteen point eight percent rate increase. Ms. Zito.
So, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield started out at a twenty-four percent renewal rate. Our consultant firm, which is McGriff, which we pay to represent us in these kind of negotiations, got them down to sixteen point seven with some incentives. So our, our agreement will say sixteen point seven, but they give us credits. Why they don't just lower our rate, I don't know. But they don't. So our consultant gave me the effective rate. If you consider what the credits are, what is the true rate gonna be? The effective rate will be fourteen point eight. We, we did pass that on our employees. We didn't charge them a higher and keep the, keep the credits. So we did pass the savings on the employees also. There's be no change to the contribution allocation for the employees, same as last year. If we pay a hundred percent of an employee at our base plan and say the, the dependent coverage for the base plan at three thousand dollar deductible is still ninety percent, two thousand deductible eighty-five percent, thousand dollar deductible eighty percent. So we are keeping our plan the same. The increase will go up slightly for an employee that has a dependent coverage for that. And as you can see, our premium is quite high. We have a lot of employees, and insurance is expensive, let's just face it. So, but we do need to renew our, our renewals one year as it always is.
Okay, and I love that you reiterated that if the one hu, the employee is covered one hundred percent.
Hundred percent at the base.
So that means the city is making sure that we're covering the fourteen point eight percent increase for the, the employee first, and then there's also buy downs and things of that nature. So, okay, I just want to make sure that we remember that when we go to discuss other things that are coming up in the budget. Okay, um, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito, for that one. We will now move on to item thirteen D, consider a motion to renew the employee dental insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for a period of one year at a twenty-four percent rate increase. The increase is offset by a credit resulting in an effective nineteen percent increase. Ms. Zito.
So this is for our dental portion that we also buy through Blue Cross. They did the same thing, twenty-four percent, uh, rate increase with a credit. So effectively, it'll be a nineteen percent increase.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, if not, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna. Okay, motion passes. Okay, item thirteen E, consider a motion renewing employee vision insurance with MetLife for a period of one year at a four percent increase in rates. Ms. Zito.
So this is our vision insurance, and this is totally voluntary. The employee pays for this insurance if they wish. It's not mandatory, and it's a minimal four percent increase this year.
Okay, any questions or comments? Kate, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion second? Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, and Ms. Salter. Okay, motion passes. Here we go. Thirteen F, consider a motion to renew the employee life insurance and various voluntary insurance for employees with Mutual of Omaha for a period of two years at a zero percent increase in rates. Ms. Zito.
Yay, we finally have a good one. So, um, the life insurance, the city provides every employee with ten thousand dollar life insurance policy. So that's no increase for the city, but the employees can also buy various voluntary program, policies like disability or whatever. Those will be at a, a zero percent increase also.
Okay, thank you, Mutual of Omaha. Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second. Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter. Okay, motion passes. Okay, on to item thirteen G, we're gonna adjourn the meeting of the city of Orange Employee Benefits Trust, and we will come back to item fourteen, reconvene meeting of city of Orange City Council. Item A, consider a motion authorizing a monthly transfer of funds from the city of Orange to the city of Orange Employee Benefits Trust to pay for employee-related benefits. Ms. Zito.
So if you didn't know why we did that, so the city has an employee benefits trust, and that is so that we can get these products tax exempt. So that's why we hold the money in a separate account and a separate fund, and we pay the bills from that fund, and that's why we have to have, uh, we have to reconvene, we have to have a special, a, a meeting for that. And we, monthly, every time we take deductions and the city puts in their contributions, we move it to that particular employee benefit trust fund bank account that has separate bank account to pay the bills so that we can be tax exempt. So this motion just authorizes, uh, the mayor and the council to, authorizes us to make that transfer each month.
Okay, all right.
Quick question. Any, any insurance that, that employees purchase goes into the city and is moved to the trust? Is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
No motion in a second. Mr. Birch, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna. Okay, motion passes. On to item fifteen A, city manager report.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Reminder, City Hall will be closed Thursday, August twenty-eighth, from eleven AM till a minute for staff development. But then, this coming Monday is Labor Day, September first, so city offices will be closed. But with September the first, I've kind of mentioned this to y'all before, but to let everybody else know, the posting requirements for our meetings has changed. It will no longer be seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting. It is now three business days prior to the date of the meeting. So weekends don't count, you know, the day you post don't count. So there actually be three business days. Labor Day, obviously, that's a holiday that wouldn't count. It's not necessarily just a city holiday, if it's a federal holiday. So we have to be very, uh, I'm off saying, if, if we think it's a holiday, it counts as a holiday. So there will be some, some times when we post early where agenda items are required to come in earlier than usual or that we're used to, and there's no more of this amendments, which every now and then something would happen, was that, well, we got amended because we still have seventy-two hours now. More than likely, that would probably never have happened. And with that, keep, kind of segue to. And, um, with that, keep, it kinda segue to, keep in mind the state legislature is in special session. Um, you know, it just seems like the state legislature continues to try to arouse our home rule authority, uh, from cities and, uh, try to take away what we can and can't do. And one thing that they continue to do and are considering in the special legislature, and there's all these different bills, but to do things such as limit our revenue and limit our expenditures. Um, so if, if those things are passed, we may be looking at additional challenges as we move forward into the next, not necessarily fiscal year twenty twenty-six, because some of the things I've seen would happen for fiscal year twenty-seven. But again, until those things are passed, they're not, but again, the other thing I hear from T M L, those kind of folks say, these are things that the state legislature, they don't get passed this time, they don't bring it back in two years. So there, there continues to be that approach. It's kinda all.
Knows. Hey, you gotta inform us. Okay, so now, if that's, uh, for the City Manager Report, we'll move to City Council Report. I'll start with Ms. Salter. And thank you for putting that on the agenda for Beaumont, 'cause it's bad. For rea- for real. I guess I shouldn't have said that, Lord, man. All right, uh, Mr. Chandler?
No report.
Mr. Birch?
No report.
Okay. Mr. Mortimer, sorry.
No report, Paul, once again, condolences.
Okay, Mr. Childs?
Yeah, a couple of things, condolences to, uh, Councilmember Birch. Uh, the second is, uh, Chief Martin, you're in a good, I compliment him on how well your presence was on Sixteenth Street. I was wondering if we can be more clear in prison on Sixteenth Street again, several businesses have contacted me. When the cruisers are sitting there on Sixteenth Street, it does make a difference. So that, that was, that part part of it there. And, uh, on what is happening in Orange, I can remember going back six, seven years ago with Kowenoff in this room with a public meeting on Sixteenth Street Initiative that turned into the, what you see as far as Chick-fil-A, Starbucks. That has floated over to other people having interest, the fact that Capstone's coming in. H E B, wherever, H E B's coming in. What's amazing, though, is our town is not growing too fast to the west. It's staying close to city center. And when you see a Lamar person, thank them for keeping what's going on downtown.
Yeah, man.
When you see the Stark Foundation, thank them for keep, for what's going on there. And you see somebody from Capstone, or Brad from H E B, we need to thank them for keeping us close, yeah, to, we don't lose our city center. We can grow out, but we gotta stay here first, and then we move out. So anyway, uh, we got, everybody, E D C, everybody's done an amazing job with this growth that's been happening.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Childs. Great comment. Ms. Mc- Ms. McKenna?
Um, my deepest condolences, Paul, and your dad. Um, my heart goes out to them. Um, and thank you, Chief, for having all of your people rolling around, uh, the historic district, 'cause they haven't made a presence lately, and I do appreciate that, because it does make a difference, especially in my little area of town, so I do appreciate it. Um, happy Labor Day, everybody, um, and thanks to everyone for all you're doing. It's a great day to live in Orange, Texas.
Yep. All right, thank you all. I will close by saying once, as you have heard also, uh, my condolences to William. I'm not gonna call you Paul, I'm gonna call you William, as we saw on the thing today, but you know, I love you. Um, also, I will say this because I wanna address it because it came up tonight. Um, as mayor, one of the things that I've always said, and I will continue to say it, is that we are a team and we are a family. When we make decisions, if it's a person on the team that has made a decision, we do not cast stones or act like it's not me, or it's not she, or it's not he, or we. It is we, and so, um, the people that came before us tonight that were upset with some of the decisions that have been made, I still stand behind every city employee, because even when things don't go as everyone thinks they should, can we talk about it and we can address it as we move forward? When things are good, nobody shows up. When they're bad, everybody shows up. However, we appreciate their voices because we do love them, we do appreciate them. As the lady brought up, my comment about us pushing local, yes, we are doing that every day. Sometimes things happen and, but we do not, uh, turn on anyone. We continue to work together to make an improvement the next time. And so I just wanted to say that because I don't, I never want anyone in city staff to think that the mayor or council would turn on them for something that was, if a decision is made, we move forward together, okay? And with that being said, I thank you all, and then once again, thank you to the Beaumont Housing Authority and everyone that came out, and of course, the young lady who is, uh, representing us with Ms. Orange County. So with that being said, we will adjourn to close that session. Boy, we got a lot. We got the agreement with firefighters, local number one four three two, negotiations with municipal police association. We have five five one point zero seven one consultation with attorney regarding annexation law and existing chapter forty-three Texas Local Government Code Industrial District Agreements and chapter two one two non annexation, non annexation agreements within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. And last but not least, consultation regarding advice on legal issues raised by providing services for other governmental entities and regarding the annual evaluation of the city manager. At this time, you can hang out and. There's one more?
Mm-hmm.
That was the city manager?
Oh, you got it, okay.
Yep, and with that being said, you can hang out outside, and we will reconvene, but it's probably gonna be a while. So we'll see you next time. Thank you.
Do we have one with A five? Or do we have one with...
I could just say, the one about the service.
Sixteen A, A five. It would be, we're gonna consider a motion authorizing our entry into a separate severance agreement with Mr. Payne.
Okay. Consider a motion authorizing the mayor to enter to a severance agreement with Michael Coates for the position of city manager of the city of Orange. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Motion, passing down a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, second, third, fourth, fifth. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
To adjourn. Yay!